Yeah, let's call the meeting to order, please.
Lake Cam, you guys are ready to roll? Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, we're good, Renner.
Jean Fox?
Here.
Sherri Barron?
Here.
Jennifer Blum?
Here.
Bob Carr?
Yep.
Will Sankler?
Here.
And I see we have Lake Cam. Anyone else recording the meeting this evening? No? Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there anyone here for public participation? Okay. I have Katie's consent to take the agenda a little bit out of order.
So, Mrs. Fox, why don't we do the acceptance, why don't you do the minute piece as the officers, they come in, and then once they come in, we can just kind of stagger it that way, if that's okay?
Sure. So, I'll entertain a motion on the minutes of this, 11:17. We don't, oh, thank you, I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We do not have the executive session minutes, correct? They'll be next time. Okay? Now...
So, where's their coming in? Katie, how, you have your presentation, you ready to roll?
I just heard the door shut.
Yeah, I think our, I think the stars are coming. And, Mrs. Fox, if you may, I can kind of give them a little drumroll piece here and do a slight intro. So, the first presentation tonight, it's certainly my privilege to introduce the Bristol County Sheriff's Department, which is here, a full contingent, in just a moment, I'll have Sergeant Douglas introduce the entire group. We've had this exciting opportunity, the real, the real stars are coming in just briefly. No offense to Sergeant Douglas and his partner, but these are our two, our two COVID dogs. We are, I believe, in the Commonwealth. Sergeant Douglas, I don't think there's anybody else in the Commonwealth doing this right now, currently, right? That's the school department?
No, no.
So, these are our two dogs, our principals, our administrators are here, are pretty familiar with these folks. Sergeant, I'll turn it over a second, they're going to bring them back out to the car, but these are, these are, these teams have worked with the building administration as an additional mitigation strategy as it relates to helping with COVID. It's an exciting, national, worldwide movement that we're taking a look at, and I, and we thought you want to see the stars of the show. As I often say, my students are the stars of the show. I tell these two officers here that the real stars are our students. So, you can imagine at the elementary schools, the kids totally embrace it, but even at the middle school, high school, these are not, this is not a law enforcement piece here. I think the relationship we've built with, with our friends here have worked, and, and I know Paul will speak a little bit to it in just a moment. The, the hits that we have determined, and some of the things that they've, they've found in our, in different areas, whether it be filters, whether it be areas and spaces, have really created an additional layer of safety. And we're pretty excited about the science behind it, but in addition, just the relationship we built with Bristol County Sheriff's Office. I think both gentlemen said, Officer Santos, both said, I think they're going to just bring them back to the cars, then come back in and join us.
It would be nice if they could go in front of some of the folks in the audience.
To do that?
They seem to have their own agenda, but...
They're friendly, friendly.
They don't fight.
They are friendly. If anybody's, anybody uncomfortable, I mean, believe me, it's hard pressed that... So, Sergeant, while, I know you're kind of under duty, but the dogs are relatively young, right? Less than two years old?
Correct.
Paul, correct? Age-wise, yes. As you can see there, that same enthusiasm, but he'll speak a little bit about it, I know they seem excited. When they actually put them to work, though, it's, it's a total different demeanor and mindset, which he'll talk to about when he, when he presents this, this evening. But they, they do frequent all five of our schools. They work with the administration and the school health and nurses as it relates to where they could be most helpful and not disruptive. They are not going about pulling out students and/or staff. We really focused on the fact that this is not a disruption, but just an additional layer of support. They even attended a football game. I know they are looking at some community events, and they've really, really, Mrs. Fox, if I may, for the school committee, we talked about the idea that although it's a small contingent that comes to our meetings, by Lake Cam doing what they're doing, this gets out to the entire community, and they see first and foremost how law enforcement and school departments can work together. And we feel we're on the cutting edge. We feel Freetown Lakeville really is...
I would agree.
These gentlemen went with their, and I know they have to bring them back to their vehicles, but went down to Texas for training.
Yeah.
There's been a lot of notoriety with some of the work that's been done in Florida, at the airports and so forth, and so we feel that potentially we're, will be a model for other schools, not just in the Commonwealth, but nationally.
It's, it's totally a model, and it's, I'm so glad it was embraced, and I'm so glad to see dogs in uniforms in a different role.
Yeah.
It's phenomenally impactful on our students and our families, and that's why I wanted you here, because I want them on camera. People see how wonderful this is, this interaction is so important.
What's impressive, and I really give Sergeant Douglas and his team and my administrators some credit, is this could have been perceived, and I really give the community a lot of support. We did a real good job of making sure people understood this was not a get, out to get you, or a way to alarm people. And I will say, both in Freetown and Lakeville, I have not received one criticism or complaint in relation to parents...
How can you complain about that?
...and the neighbors really working through, so, hard pressed. But, I mean, the messaging was important, because it could have come across that we're lining people up, and that we're taking, and we really made a point to, to be sure that we did not identify and single. In fact, Paul, Sergeant Douglas will tell you when he, when he returns from, the star's coming, he will share with you our message, he's going to go back to the car, then come back. One of the things that we talked about early on, and when he comes back in, he'll introduce the entire group, was that his interaction would not be directly with students, so the officers know that if, in fact, they come across an incident and/or issue in the school, that they'd report to the school administration and/or the nurse, or both. So, the idea being that if a child, for some reason, you know, we, there was, there was a find, and we felt we needed to report something, there was a desk, they're not having the interaction with the child, they're going to the principal, the assistant principal, designee, and/or nurse, and then going from there. I, we talked about one incident in our isolation room, where the dogs picked up on COVID within the filters of, so everybody thinks the idea of a filter in a, in a school setting is ideal, right? Great. But the, the filters aren't continually replaced and changed in a timely fashion. The dogs picked that up, nobody else had picked that up. So, the isolation room, where we were bringing students in, we needed to upgrade, and that only came as a result of the walkthroughs that they did, working with principals about finding key areas like cafeterias. We've been focusing on those large areas where we have a large contingent, if there's a desk area, so forth, lockers, and, you know, maybe gymnasium, and, and certainly the principals, as you can see, are pretty familiar. So, Mrs. Fox, I'm...
This is wonderful.
I'm stalling a couple of minutes here, because they are going to come back in, and Sergeant Douglas will introduce his entire group, and he and supervisor, it was great. It really took, so, the impetus of this was me seeing something in the local newspaper, reaching out to Sergeant Douglas, who immediately asked for permission through Sheriff Hodgson's office. It literally just took me sending one letter, where we had approval, and, and they've been in, and they're going to continue to work with our, with our schools.
And again, it's just the Bristol County Sheriff that's doing this in this state.
So, I think...
In the country.
Yeah, there are very few, so Sergeant Douglas, if you can go to the microphone, introduce your, your partner, I don't want to say partner in crime, right, that would not be the pun to use here, but, but certainly your partner, and then supervisors, absolutely, yes.
Yes, just speak, yes.
Thank you so much, but I, I appreciate, I know that was a little challenging, but it gave people firsthand knowledge of it.
It would have been a long meeting if we would have had the, the dogs with us, that's for sure.
Sergeant Douglas, I tried to list a little bit of the info, but if you could introduce the group that's here representing the sheriff's office, and how this gets started, and from your perspective, kind of your experience here?
Absolutely, sir. So, we have our superintendent, Stephen J. Souza, big, big supporter of our program, and, you know, one of our biggest cheerleaders, and we're very thankful to have him. We have our PIO, Public Information Officer, Jonathan Darling, another, another cheerleader, you know, for, for the whole agency, but for K-9 as well, getting the message out there for us. And we have K-9 Officer Theodore Santos, and his partner was Duke. And my name's Captain Paul Douglas, and we're all from the Bristol County Sheriff's Office, K-9 Unit. And can't thank you all enough, especially the board, all the school committee members, all the principals, Principal Higgins, Dr. Sullivan, everybody, Principal Ward, driving, driving you guys crazy sometimes, coming in at all hours of the school, school day, but all five principals, assistant principals have been great, and myself too, sir.
Paul, can you speak just briefly? Obviously, we have, like, the agenda, but we put you guys right up front, and thanks for bringing the dogs. Speak to, you went down to Texas, did national training, I've been in contact with Travis, who was a, a part of the group, and some of the, just the, the science behind it, in addition, the, the relationships have been great, you're absolutely correct, but maybe speak to what's, what's happening at a, at a national level, and how they're monitoring what's happening right here in Freetown Lakeville. Bless you.
Bless you. So, our program started, we got up and rolling, Teddy and I, in May, and it was a program that the sheriff wanted to start, he saw it and felt that, you know, it is a role of, of public safety, just in a, in a different, different role, you know, we're still looking at, you know, keep people safe and, and stuff, so the big thing was schools, that was one of his biggest thing, was, was the children. So, we, we started in May of 2021, went through, right through to August, September timeframe. We trained with Florida International University, who basically are a bunch of scientists, and they also transed over into the, the dog handler world, and gave it a whirl. And it started out basically at FIU with avocado trees, believe it or not. They had these diseases, and they trained, FIU trained these dogs to detect the disease in the avocado trees, and then COVID hit. So, they said, hey, how can we help? You know, we're going to save trees, but we want to save lives. So, they, they got some science, I'm not a scientist, I'm definitely not going to stand up here and, and, and get too much into science, but, and then they started with, with masks, and like we're all wearing, and dogs, you know, imprinting, and then it just, and, and it took off from there, and then we jumped on board. We're actually, as of right now, the first law enforcement agency to start this program. We're the only two law enforcement dogs that are doing it, an agency, as we know of, of right now, to this day. And basically, whether it's the Delta variant, whether it's the Omicron variant that just came out, the dogs can detect it. Their olfactory system is 400 times stronger than ours, and not to compare this virus to any kind of foods or anything, but I'll compare it to, to make it easier to understand, is a tomato. So, if you look at a tomato, you have a red tomato, a yellow tomato, green tomatoes, when you eat them, they taste the same, right? It's the same exact thing with, with the COVID virus. You know, our dogs, with, with their olfactory system, can, you know, will detect it, it's the same exact thing, it's just, you know, it's just different, like, you know...
So, Paul, we're familiar, just for the board, and we have a couple of questions before you leave tonight, just speak to, so, when the dogs training, and they're working with you guys, they will just stop, just kind of walk through that very briefly, what that looks like?
So, we don't do any, anything with people, or any kind of people searches, it's pretty much, our dogs are a disinfectant tool. So, we'll bring, we'll come into, to the schools here, Freetown Lakeville, and whether it's, you know, the principals say, hey, you know, can we do the isolation room, can we do the cafeteria, can we do classrooms, et cetera, we come in, and if the dog detects COVID, they sit. So, with that, you know, we've had, you know, several indications since we started this program here in September, and basically, we tell the administration that the dog hit, and then the principals then determine with, with the superintendent, I believe, and then the areas, you know, disinfected and cleaned.
So, if the community and the school board here, just to understand that, so, for example, they went into the weight room here at the high school, and detected that some of the equipment needed some additional cleaning, because they had hits, or if they're in a classroom, they can go back, and now an administrator can say, okay, so who is in that classroom, who is at those desks, and, and make some determination through the health office, the nurse office, not the, not the officer, whether potentially there's some, some risk that we need to take a look at. Most of us love the dogs very much, but don't want the dogs to sit near us, Paul, right? No offense, so that's kind of the internal joke.
Yeah, we've, I know personally, I've searched Principal Higgins' office, and said, oh, please, oh, please don't sit, I've had the honor to do your office as well, sir, and have said the same thing, so...
So, I don't know if board members have questions, or if any other gentleman, but...
Questions? Anyone from the committee? I, I did have one. How many schools are you working in now? You've got to be in high demand.
So, we are. Like anything else, you know, to get it kickstarted, and, you know, up and running, we've, we're busy.
Yeah.
You are our biggest school district, but we've, we've been to, to other, other schools, we've been to other city halls, that's, that's been another, you know, town offices, we've been to our Department of Public Health building in New Bedford several times, our local fire department in New Bedford, we've been there several times, so we're, we're busy, so...
I'm starting to see some of my colleagues, too, and Paul knows this, a couple neighboring communities, I don't want to list them in case they don't take the initiative, reached out to me to ask me how complicated it was, and kind of walk them through the steps. So, I, I do think, I mean, part of the issue is going to be having additional dogs, I guess, and having a cadre or team trained properly, so they can carry that task.
I think it's incredible, and I'm so grateful that you reached out, you responded, and answered this. I think it's an important call to, to try, give us another layer. Everything's a layer right now, we're, you know, battling an unknown, really, agent that's pervasive and changing all the time. Having this for us is a, is a wonderful extra layer, we do appreciate it.
No, we, we appreciate it, and it does work.
Yeah.
I think, I don't want to speak for the principals and the administration, but it's been firsthand, our dogs, and even the nurses, our dogs have hit, both of them, yeah, both our dogs, Hunter and Duke, and it's been backed up with, yes, that student tested positive, and, you know, whether it was a mask, or whether it was a desktop, or, you know, it was a close contact, we've had that too a lot. Well, you know, Joe or Sue, you know, is a close contact, so it just, it puts up the, you know, the flag.
It does.
And then you know what? You know, the janitor comes in and disinfects the area, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt to do that, so...
No, no, that's true. Mrs. Barron, did you have a...
Do the dogs live at your home with you?
Yes, ma'am. Yep, yes, ma'am. All our canines, we have nine total in, in our unit, ranging from patrol dogs, narcotics, detection and explosives and firearms, and then the two COVID dogs. So, all our dogs at, at the BCSO, all our dogs live with us and come home with us, yes.
So, so one has a lab, what's the other one?
They're both labs, ma'am.
Oh, he has a lab, the other guy?
Yes.
Oh, he's very handsome.
So, Sheriff, Sheriff Hodgson's office really, and Sheriff Hodgson deserves a lot of credit for, you know, allowing this to happen, allowing these guys to come in, he referenced the, the larger group, they've actually come and done some classwork, the, the other offices, and, and worked with some of our criminal, you know, criminology class and so forth, to help beyond just these two dogs to offer that, and I know they've done that in the past with us, too. They use our facility in the summertime and do some training here, too, because the campus is a great opportunity for them to get into schools, too, and we'll continue to work. It's, it's absolutely a mutually well-respected relationship that we've built, and we're going to continue.
And again, it's always good to see uniforms and canines in a different kind of context. I think it's really good for the community building, it's so important. It never ends, so, thank you, kudos to you, congratulations on all the wonderful work you're doing, we are grateful.
And we want to thank Lakeville Police Department, too, because they've been great with us. You know, the, the SROs have been great, the police chief's been great, their whole agency's been great, too, so, great, you know, collaboration and, and stuff, you know, everybody working together.
Yeah, that's a good, good point. Both Freetown and Lakeville Police were contacted through the sheriff's office because of that jurisdiction piece, to be sure that, that they're working together, and because most of our schools are in Lakeville, that, that's kind of the greatest contact, but Freetown Elementary School's also included as well, so, as Mr. Ward knows.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sergeant, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight, appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
Good work, I'll see you back in the halls.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can't go around when you see a couple of cute dogs.
No, you can't.
What are you doing? You're going to be up next, Katie.
You're going to make Katie follow up on that?
I, I know, but she's, she's up for the, the task.
She's ready?
Yes, Katie is going to give us the student report.
Hi, so, this Friday, we have a Ponicon, and it's a game night with Family Feud, video games, and board games. The games are free, and there's also free food. People can bring a canned good to participate in a tournament, and these canned goods will be combined with the homecoming canned goods and donated to a homeless shelter. Winter sports have also started, and in the music department, we have the winter concert on December 14th at 7:00 PM. Students have also auditioned for the spring musical, which is Legally Blonde, this happened on Tuesday. The ARHS School Counseling Department will be hosting the Fifth Annual Career Day in Person on Friday, February 4th, from 12:30 to 2:13, and they're seeking presenters. Our life club is running a Toys for Tots drive, and on December 16th, the Class of 2024 will be hosting a live gingerbread house building competition.
That's fantastic. Do we get to eat it after?
I believe so.
Okay, yeah.
Katie, we're expecting a big turnout, from what I understand, from Mr. Sullivan for Friday night, too, right?
Oh, yes. Many students are very excited for it.
Any questions for Katie? We can cut you loose, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you, keep up the great work.
Now we get to the really fun stuff, the old budget.
Oh, we want to do the improvement plans, or you want to do the budget first?
Twenty-two.
You want to do a...
We can do whatever you want.
Okay, why don't, why don't we do the school improvement plans, do the principals out first, and then the little break with the budget in between, Mrs. Lees, and then we'll come back for some of the updates on the MCAS.
That sounds fine to me, yeah.
So, Mrs. Fox, thank you. So, now my principals have to follow Katie, what a challenge that is. So, listen, it is my pleasure, think about this, folks, probably haven't been in the same room, presented to the, both Freetown and Lakeville communities in, what, two years, as it relates to school board, as to what's happening. And they're the reason, along with their extended staff, that we have done what we've done the last two years. They have done, literally, and I don't use the term loosely, heroic work these past two years, getting our kids back in school, and so it's my pleasure. Part of the school council plan is that they must present an annual school improvement plan, which has been, which needs to be improved, approved by the superintendent. That's really kind of been done informally already, and that's why they're presenting tonight, but the last piece is kind of a consult with the school board. School board does not need to take formal action, they know they're somewhat on the clock, we've rehearsed this, we haven't literally rehearsed it, but they've done that, where we're going to go from high school down to the elementary school, we will use the, the presentation format, just for title, for MCAS, it's a little challenging to see the plans, I know you have hard copies.
Yeah.
But without further ado, it wasn't a short straw, but we were, we're starting with the secondary. First, and our highly successful high school, and I'll introduce for her first school improvement plan presentation, Kaylin Deser. Kaylin?
I have to say that Katie is a valued member of the school council. I leave that school council, it takes so much to prepare for, I feel like, and then I leave there just feeling on top of the world, they're just so excited about everything. She just said how great her senior year is, and they've done, they did a lot to help with this process. So, the school improvement plan that we put forward from the high school is somewhat a second iteration of a school improvement plan from 2019 to 20. So, we had a NIASC visit in 2019, and their recommendations were to continue some initiatives. So, we put that forward as a school improvement plan, and we're well on our way, and as you know the history of it, you know, we had a shutdown, then we had a year of hybrid, so those goals were put aside for a year, and we've brought them back. So, I did something a little bit different with some extra tables and things, Mr. Davies here in the audience, and I appreciate his support, he had some different suggestions for how I should do that. Technically, I put tables within tables, but I'm not as talented with technology as he is. So, our first, our first two goals focus on active learning. We defined that in 2019, and NIASC defines that as well. We, it's hands-on learning, which we've done a lot with, but it's also about authentic projects, student choice, real higher-order types of thinking. So, our first goal is to continue the old goal of identifying lessons that meet that. So, even today, our teachers were identifying lessons that meet that higher-order thinking. Our second goal has the first iteration that we started in 2019, and then you can see the second iteration is where we've taken that sense, and that is to take that active learning, hands-on learning opportunities, and to create more electives. So, the part I'd really like to just quickly highlight is that in 2000, we've put some new classes in, and even in 2020, we put in sports medicine, business management, color and design, painting and drawing, Your World, counting them, Java, Python, it's programming, Portuguese 1, cybersecurity, and then Portuguese 2, so that's what we've done in the last few years, that's 10. We plan to put more in for next year, and I know we have the school, I'm sorry, the program of studies coming up soon, too, we'd like to introduce marine biology, engineering 3, advanced personal finance as an elective, Portuguese 3, and public speaking 2, which is speech and debate, and add to that also an introduction of film through the English program. So, a real focus on that active learning and putting more courses in. Our third goal is one that comes from NIASC, but it's also near and dear to our goals ourselves, is that having strategies and programming for students who are not on IEPs or 504s, but need that kind of, need more support. So, we have really been relying upon our D cap, our District Accommodation Plan, looking at accommodations that you give all students in tier one, but also things that we can do moving from there. We have SST, our Student Support Team meetings that meet every week, that's guidance and administration, and other, you know, people such as nurse and SRO. And we have our BBST meetings, which is when a student is, is having, is not meeting success, we pull together all their teachers, have a building-based meeting, come up with a plan from this, we really formalize those processes. We also have our TNT lab, Testing and Tutoring Lab, which has grown and then shrunk during the pandemic, and then it's back now and very robust, and teachers who are communicating with other teachers and supporting students and making them their own, even though they're not actually their own on their roster, so, some different things we're doing for that. And our last one is MCAS, I'll just speak briefly to that, because I know we're talking about MCAS after. Our MCAS scores, we're very proud of them, we think we're going to struggle a little bit next year, as we've moved from the legacy testing to next generation, and the scoring will be completely next generation, so we're expecting a little dip in scores, something I'd talk about further at another time, but we are still putting in high goals that we want to attain, 80% and 75%, and 88% ELA math and bio, in meeting or exceeding. So, we're really trying to focus on those, those students who struggle a bit and finding ways to move them up, so that's really kind of a theme all the way through this. So, those are the four goals.
And you'll hear, so, as Principal Deser kind of shared, since we're doing MCAS a little bit later on, you'll hear a little bit more detail at each level, even though they've incorporated to their improvement plans, they know that we're going to have another shot at this a little bit later on tonight, so... So, Mrs. Fox, if I may, my suggestion, unless the board wants to ask, is we can go through all the presentations, then simply, they're not going anywhere, we can call them back if there's a question.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that makes sense, and we have Mr. Higgins.
Mr. Higgins from the middle school.
Well, hello.
Well, hello.
Thank you for having me here. I will bring my dog next time.
Good.
So, I appreciate you taking the opportunity for, for me to speak to you tonight about our school improvement plan. This is a product of quite a bit of collaboration that we've been working on with our curriculum leadership team as the first step along the process, and then the school council, and we did quite a bit of work on it, and I think we're, we're, we have a good plan, and we're quite proud of where we are. We, we have a three-tiered approach to this, to our SMART goals for the school improvement plan. In fact, they are in numbered order, in reverse, if, if you would think about it from the perspective of what we identify as a pyramid. We start with helping our teachers, we're focused on helping our teachers improve instruction, identifying that as the, one of our key elements to build upon all of the other elements that we want for our goals. So, it's, it's interesting, because we are a year behind the active learning strategy that the high school's doing. It's not a surprise that, that I also was a part of it prior to moving from the high school to here, this active learning goal, and so we looked at it as an important step for us, too, in the... And so we looked at it as an important step for us, too, in the middle school. We're a year behind. A year, a year ago or two prior to COVID, we had been using, we really were focusing on best practices, but, and one of those being, of course, lesson objectives. Teaching to those objectives, identifying what is the key element of every lesson, and then making sure that not only are we building lessons around those objectives, but then emphasizing that to the students. As we know, anybody who sat through an adult class, any master's level classes or anything, oftentimes you can sit there and if you're not given that information, you often find yourself thinking, what are we doing this for? What is the point? And that same thing happens in a classroom. It just happens much more often because they're going through seven periods in the day. So really focusing with our teachers, and that was again, from a couple of years ago. So now we, we changed the school improvement plan for last year. We weren't able to take the next step. We were focused on hybrid learning. And now we're moving into the next phase, which is identifying those strategies that we're currently using in the building that are focused on active learning. They're focused on hands-on activities. They're focused on student-centered and collaboration. Many of those things are currently happening in our building. What we try to do is build them out as much as possible to take advantage of the intellectual capital that already exists. So that when we, after we have had an opportunity to spread that information around, then we can identify maybe additional needs we may have in the building. And then we can request from you professional development opportunities that could then fill out and maybe fill in those last bits and pieces that we may need. So that is, again, that's the SMART goal number three. A focus on the active learning strategies and this year identifying those, those, those learning and I should say instructional tools and strategies that are currently being used. The second phase, and therefore the second goal, is identifying how we can help our students improve their learning. As we returned this year, we obviously identified that our students were going to have gaps in their learning from last year and obviously the year before in the spring. But not just their learning that focuses on the curriculum, but also their learning focused around social and emotional learning. So for, for our students who maybe didn't have the same maybe interactions that they would have had with their peers over the last sixteen months, what can we do to help accelerate them to the place where they should be in the, in the, at the end of their now seventh grade year or the end of their eighth grade year, the end of their sixth grade year? So those are the, some of the things we're doing academically, because we have to fill those gaps, too, is identifying real data using the I ready program, which we had not done before. We had brought it up to the middle school this year and it's been an invaluable tool for our teachers to adjust their instruction on a, on a, on a lesson by lesson, but and on a unit by unit basis. So identifying where we have needs and then adjusting the instruction accordingly. We have rolled out our homework club, which is an after-school support, instructional support for students. We usually have in the past, prior to my coming in and then obviously the first year was, we did it mid-year and then last year we didn't really have the opportunity. We rolled out homework club this year in the middle of September, identifying that we were going to need to provide these supports at a much earlier time than we had done in the past. In addition to that, we're running a peer tutoring program one day a week. We have quite a bit of eighth graders, eighth grade leaders who have raised their hand and said we, in fact, I should give them credit. I don't want to take credit for the organization or even the consideration for it. It was the students who came forward and said, we would like to provide the peer tutoring if, if there's an opportunity to do it. I want to compliment Tristan Jolly, who is our eighth grade guidance counselor and our guidance counselor, our guidance curriculum leader for her leadership in putting it together. And now we're able, we run that on one day a week in, in, I'm sorry, in addition to the homework club, which also runs three days a week. In addition to that, we are rolling out once a month, we have, well, I should say twice a month. We have two lessons each month during advisory focused on identified social, emotional concerns that we may have. So in some ways, it's, in one of the topics we've working on is community building. One is focused on cultural awareness. One is on coping skills. So our guidance counselors are the ones who are creating these lessons and then handing off to the advisory teachers, to our teachers, and then our teachers are providing those, those lessons during those extended advisory periods, which we're doing twice each month. My hope is to be able to expand that as we go forward. This is our pilot year. We've not done this before. But it's also giving the guidance counselors more of a voice in what we're doing in our day-to-day basis and our day-to-day instruction. So we have this, as I said, we think of it as a three-tier. First, we want to focus on our instruction, improving our instruction. Secondly, we want to improve, improve on our teacher learn, I mean, I'm sorry, on the student learning. And then the last goal and the first, the first on the list, but ultimately it's just the results goal, right? It's the MCAS goal. So we know those things are working. We know the results end up being through that MCAS. We get good results. But ultimately, we don't, we can't focus on that. That's a result. So we've identified these two goals, teacher instruction, student learning, and then we produce the results on the MCAS. Which I'll get into more detail about what, what we did in order to analyze our data such that we could then be more focused and strategic later on when I come back up. But you can see that we've had some real success already this year. I'm very happy with the fact that we, we have been able to, as a result of some money as a Title One, we now have a Title One reading specialist. We've just hired him. Very excited about him joining our, our team. He'll actually be joining us at the very beginning of the, the new year. He is coming to us from Boston Public Schools is a fantastic addition. But that's one of the examples of things that we're going to be able to do. And I get, I'll get into more detail on some of these things in terms of the strategies for MCAS in a few moments. Thank you.
So the nice transition now is Dr. Sullivan joining us at the upper elementary slash heading to middle school, fourth and fifth grade intermediate school. And kind of you'll see, you'll see a little bit of that blend in her plan as well. Dr. Sullivan.
So I know you have the plan in front of you. So what I refer to, I'm going to be referring to the acceleration roadmap, which I used as I built out the goals for my school improvement plan that my curriculum leaders, of course, are always involved in everything and then my school council approved. So when deciding on the goals this year, in addition to looking at the academic data that we gleaned from our I ready and our MCAS, we looked at the, the acceleration roadmap. The roadmap is simply organized around three overarching priorities. And those are all staked in research and were developed through extensive research with a stakeholder group. The priorities are to foster a sense of belonging and partnership among students and families, to continuously monitor students' understanding and to ensure strong, great, appropriate instruction with in-time scaffolding as it's needed. So those fit really nicely, but not quite in order of the goals as I have them. So as far as fostering a sense of belonging and a partnership among students and families, that goes with my goal number one. I work with the Highlander Group. And that's a goal you'll hear a little bit more about from Michael and Bethany because that's a goal in common that we have. So I'll speak to goal one and goal three together and then I'll go to goal two because that matches the last part of the acceleration roadmap. Does everybody follow me on that? So we're just kind of jumping around a bit. But just because they have three priorities didn't match up completely in the order that I wanted to use them in. So the first and third goals, as I said, they're, they're most closely related. And I'll just give you an idea of what you see in front of you, just sort of drilled down a little bit. The first goal, again, drilled down, just means that we are going to use everything within our reach to forge and cultivate our relationships with our students and their families, with the end goal being engagement of students. Research shows us that by engaging students in the learning process, we increase their attention and their focus and we motivate them to practice higher-level thinking skills, which is exactly what we want to do, and that promotes meaningful learning experiences. So the strategies that we'll be looking towards to get to this end are, you know, there's many of them there. But I work with the Highlander Institute so far. To give you an idea of what that work looks like, I have meetings with Christina Corso, who, there hasn't been an instance that something hasn't come up where I've either arrived to the meeting late or had to be excused for a minute, you know, running, I'm running a building. And she's incredibly flexible. And when I come back and tell her what happened, she has a suggestion for nearly everything. And when I told her we were looking for new literacy programs, I'm looking for a new S E L program, just the wealth of knowledge and has been wonderful. But she, in addition to her appointments with me, she has appointments with our curriculum leader. She meets with them via Zoom. She's come in and visited each of their classrooms with the ultimate goal of modeling for them so that they can go out and model to their teachers that, in their departments, what an ideal learning environment would look like for every student. So that's very important to us, that we're addressing all students' needs. The second piece of, of reaching this goal is the reconvening of the, of the S E L committee. That's work that was previously done, starting in two thousand and seventeen, and then with all sorts of things that have happened over the years, that sort of got put back, you know, wasn't in the forefront. But I think many of you know that that is my baby. That was, my whole entire research study and doctoral work was under that, under Dr. Nash, our former interim superintendent. So that's very important to me and now more than ever, just in my own school with what I'm seeing, basic five competencies of, of S E L are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible, responsible decision-making. And in the disjointed school year that we had prior to the last one and the hybrid model last year, although I think we did a beautiful job, my students were seven and eight years old the last time they had normal school and we're in a classroom with twenty-two others. So even physically knowing where their body space, where they belong as far as their body space, those are things that we have to address to, before we can, we have to address before we can even get to learning at Grace, at least. So we're doing that. We've made incredible progress now that we're at the end of the trimester. They know the expectations. They're, they're aware of other people and one another. And of course, I'm not speaking about every single child, but by and large, it did take a hit. The social piece did take a hit and we are addressing that. And again, it is something that has always been very important to me. And the committee is going to be looking K to five. We do have the S E L committee up and running again. And we're committed to finding a common language, whether that means with a program or without a program. We will have one K to five so that children know what the expectations are all the way up and that things don't change. When they get to the intermediate school, now I don't know what you're talking about. What's that? So we will be getting that rolling hopefully, you know, hopefully we get some headway on that this year. I know that Dr. Jablinski is working with, with a team on getting that rolling. And then also in our first goal, I felt the need to put attendance in there. That's also mentioned very clearly in the acceleration roadmap. So it's fairly straightforward. If we can't, if it's students aren't in school, then I can't reach them for any of these other goals, right? So we've been paying attention to the attendance. We, our goal is ninety-four percent. Ninety-four percent is what is recommended by the state. That's what you're looking to have. I have it there for you in the, in the plan where we were. You can see November was low. It was, I think it was, I believe, I don't even have it in front of me. I think it was ninety-one point three. So that's, that's not with quarantines taking out or illnesses being taken out. That's what it is. We'll drill down deeper with those numbers and take those things out because we are coding differently when students are out. We do have a new coding system and we can take that out very, very easily. And that was, we're very thankful to Carol Holton for getting that. Actually, I think, I think Jack came up with it. Am I right? With the A Q? Yeah. So I'll, I'll give credit to my colleague, Jack and Carol Holton for getting it done. But that's going to be very helpful for us in monitoring the attendance. I myself right now have, and I don't think it's bad out of four hundred forty-five students. I have sixteen students that I'm looking at that have eight or more absences in the trimester we just finished, which is, is, is a concern. So we're working on, on that and that, those are not COVID-related. So that, that takes us through goal one. Goal three, again, connected, is, is, is one that I have repeated it in the past, I think most of us has. This is the community, community and parent engagement one, but I feel as though we need to revisit that. So you'll see in, and I wrote that we're not only promoting, but we're rebuilding of the relationships. We didn't have parents in. What we were communicating was usually, you know, whether it was an A week or, you know, where we were, A week, B week, where are we going? Who, does anyone know where they're going? So this is more, you know, families, all the things that we can do to have families in our turkey trial. We have wonderful book there going on. They have an evening tonight while I'm here, open up to parents. We have in-school assemblies being booked for January already. We have field trips being booked. We're, we're looking all the way into June with things that are booked and we have parents in the building all the time. So again, I, you know, I don't need to read you every strategy that's on there. The memo that goes home every single Thursday from parents, I get a lot of positive feedback from that. And that, that's a nice feeling, you know, that people are reading it. They do see what's in it. Also, much of that same stuff goes into the, the superintendent's corner. Some things are different, but typically it's the same thing. So if they didn't see it in one place, they'll see it in the other. In that, in that same vein, I did say that I have gotten a lot of good feedback on the one calls, but I'm absolutely humbled, especially over the last couple of weeks with notes, cards, phone calls, people stopping me at parent pickup, just with words of thanks and gratitude. And I hope that you hear those things too because they really are, they are nice to hear. We heard a lot of it last year, a lot of thank you for everything that you're doing. And, and it's, I think it fell aside for a little while, but just over the last couple of weeks, I've gotten an awful lot of emails. So I'm very, very grateful to the community for that. So then the second goal is where we get into, there's the data. And we, like everyone else said, we will talk more about that later. But in that piece, you'll, you'll also see this one that Michael and Bethany will, will speak to as well. We met and, and talked about this one at length. One of the, one of the biggest debates that we had was that it's a very lofty goal. We didn't say eighty percent. We didn't say we were looking for eighty percent of students to make, you know, X amount of progress. We, we said that all students will be at or above grade level or will obtain their identified I ready stretch growth in both reading and mathematics. And I felt very strongly that maybe they're not going to get to grade level or, or above grade level. And that's okay, as long as we have a plan, and we do. But let's hope and make it happen that they reach their stretch goal. And I do think it's entirely possible. So I did put it in there. In the ways that we're able to do that is we've looked at the data since the raw data came in in August on the, on the MCAS. The curriculum leaders and I had looked at that. Again, with a lot of help from Carol Holton and getting things organized for me in a format that was easy to read. Then, once the, we have the students in, we did the fall, fall I ready benchmarks and we had our data team meetings and, and just drilled way deep into that. They do, the MCAS and I ready, for my building at least, in both content areas correlate very, very well. The scores are very similar. So that tells us an awful lot. We're able to use the I ready to help them make gains. I expect to see really big gains and it's typical when I became a principal at the intermediate school for the first time, I had to say to Bethany, I don't know if you remember Bethany, but I wasn't, you know, really familiar with I ready because we didn't have it at the middle school, but I was like stunned at the growth in the winter. Do you remember that? And I'm like, you're not going to believe it. It's a miracle. I'm a miracle worker. I wasn't. There are incredible gains in the winter and I didn't really realize that. So I expect to see those this winter, too. And then we'll have a better idea of where we really are. They've settled into school. They're comfortable with one another. They've made those social, emotional gains. And then we'll see where we are. The supports, I couldn't be more grateful that we have our interventionists, one in each grade level from the E S O grant. That's just incredibly wonderful. I have two highly qualified teachers that are filling those roles for me. One is a retired teacher from my building, so she's very familiar with the staff, knew how to bob and weave around pulling children out. And then I also have another one who was, who was a certified teacher, but was a stay-at-home mom and a full-time sub last year. And then, of course, I have my wonderful reading specialist, Robin DeCosta. My staff does beautifully with their common planning time. It's not ever one wasted minute. You almost couldn't catch anybody not discussing students and student work. So that's the third piece of that. And I think, other than drilling a little further into it, which seems to be my phrase tonight, into the MCAS and the next slide, that's about it, unless you have anything. Thank you very much.
I'm not sure, are we going Freetown, Lakeville? What do we, are we? Absolutely. Even better. So both Bethany for Assamson and Lakeville and Mike Ward, Freetown, will share some similarities and some, but also some, some uniqueness to each of the schools as well.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. So you've heard from the other three schools. One of the things that's a little bit different for the elementary schools than the intermediate schools, we also have a literacy grant where we work with a department of ed consultant a significant amount of time. She's in our schools every week. She does after-school P D with staff every month. And it also has, consists of regional meetings that we also go to. They're virtual this year. But we do have, I believe it's three regional meetings that we also attend. And we have a core team that does that. And then we have ten, eight to ten additional staff that also gets professional development after school. So putting this plan together this year was actually really great because we also have Highlander Group in addition to the Department of Ed Consultant. So lots of peoples in classrooms and lots of different initiatives. So hopefully after Mr. Ward and I talk, you will actually see how they really do complement each other at the elementary level. So I'll be talking about that. So the first goal, I'll just read it, but again, by spring of two thousand twenty-two, as we continue our work with the Highlander Institute, again, through ongoing meetings, building-based teams, including parents, professional development sessions, coaching and modeling, and a district leadership book study at Assamson Elementary School and Freetown, will develop a shared vision where we are. Assawamse Elementary School and Freetown will develop a shared vision where we are all collectively committed to academic and social, emotional growth of all students and staff as measured through student, teacher, and leadership surveys. So the biggest part in that goal, again, is the academic and the social, emotional growth. So if you think of the Highlander Group, it really is that community-based professional development and working with teachers and parents, and then the Department of Ed is more that academic growth that I will be talking about. So one of the biggest initiatives that we did with the design team is we started a vision. The vision at Assawamse, just being honest, is before my time, and the mission, they're a little outdated. So we did start by looking at that, and under critical issues, I won't read the whole thing, but we have a draft vision that we created with teachers and families. So AES is an inviting, welcoming school. I'll just highlight a few of them. Teachers are happy and proud to be teaching. Students are excited to learn, energetic. All members of a classroom community are able to navigate fluidly in the spaces they need to complete tasks. Again, it talks about students, academics, and social, emotional needs are nurtured. And again, this is just a draft. So as one of my benchmarks of measures of progress is that by June 2022, we will have a vision for Assawamse Elementary School that we'll be able to incorporate and put on our website and lead our building forward. So the consultants are in the schools this year. Four of the main things they're working on is awareness, community building, cognitive development, and critical consciousness, which is really like the academic mindset of kids. So some of our strategies and initiative, again, the design team that we meet three times throughout the year, fall, winter, and spring. We will continue the completion of the AES vision using data from surveys and just observations and talking with teachers. One of their initiatives that we're working on is prioritizing if-then statements, so almost like taking your overarching goals, but really defining them. So if my classroom is really community-based, then you will see kids asking questions or kids working collaboratively or not afraid to take risks. So it really like defines what that ideal classroom should look like across Assawamse Elementary School. Draft a data collection plan. So how would we collect data on that? So one of the things we do with the Department of Ed and with Highlanders, walkthroughs, so you can easily go into a classroom and tally mark or collect data on our kids collaborating. Are they asking questions? Are they okay to make mistakes? You know, and it's pretty telling if you don't see that. That's just, you know, data that we then use to work with staff collectively to make sure that, you know, these things are an ideal classroom that we would like to see across all classrooms. So that's something we've really been working on with the Highlander Group. So analyzing student data, again, using a protocol. So this is some of the Highlander Group initiatives, again, cognitive developing, the community building, sociocultural awareness. So when we look at that, we're really just looking at, you know, students, are they respecting their peers' opinions? So just kind of being sociocultural aware, academic mindset, and again, that social, emotional learning. So then we use that data to create the relationships between teachers and students, and then we set goals that we'll continue to look at throughout the year, again, with the goal of the end of the year, having that ideal classroom community and a vision statement for Assawamse. So again, the Highlander Group really focuses more on the overall school community building. And again, right in goal one, it talks about collectively committing to the academic and the social and emotional growth. You know how much learning, like Dr. Sullivan said, really takes place without that community or social, emotional well-being being nurtured, especially with children, and all the gaps that we truly have created through the whole COVID pandemic. So Mike is going to talk a little bit more about DESI and goal two.
Excellent. So thank you, everyone. I just want to pause for a quick moment and just, as Mr. Mederos said, it's been a couple of years since we've been in the same room. I just want to say thank you for the support you have given, myself, my colleagues, obviously the teachers and families here. I just want to make sure I say that in a moment. And I also want to recognize two staff members that came this evening to give me a little bit of support, whatnot. They're both on my school council team, so they've gone through their school improvement plan with me, so thank you for both of you being here. So as Principal Penalt and Dr. Sullivan has just shared about goal number two, 100% lofty, right? It's a goal that we've had lots of conversation about, thought about, and as you can see, 100% of our students will be at grade level or obtain their identified stretch growth. We understand some students may not make grade level. However, as opposed to stretch growth, so you know, there's typical growth, and students typically make that amount, but as we know, we've learned there are some gaps. We need to close those gaps, so they have to reach their stretch goal, stretch goal and growth in this. So that's why we've looked at this 100% of students, and we believe with some hard work, making sure we understand where students are at, that we will reach this goal to the best of our ability. So how do we go about doing this, right? So you've heard the strategies. Benchmark all students, done. We've been doing that since the fall, right? We've analyzed the data to identify deficits. We've done that. That is continuous as we go. Identify students not on grade level. Dig deeper and identify students needing intervention. The great part about this, and you've heard this before, Mr. Mederos made an analogy, we used to have a data room. It's now moved into my conference room where, if you look at an NFL draft, we have each child identified. We know where they are, where they need to get to, and we have a plan for it. Each teacher has a data dashboard, and here's the plan that we have to do. So if it's tier-one instruction, here's the core work that we have to do. Then there's tier-two instruction, which means small group intervention with the teacher. If that's not quite working, Dr. Jablinski has gotten through title monies that we have, part-time interventionists here. I have one in K and one. I have one in two and three. They're meeting students. We have our reading specialists. So we have these all identified in our building to meet our students' needs with the hope of reaching this 100%. And as Ms. Penalt just stated, you've heard about Highlander. I want to bring us a little bit into the DESI goal that we've been working on for a couple of years now. So the focus of this goal is around phonics and phonemic awareness, and that's just something when we talk about MCAS, which we're going to talk about in a moment or two, that this has been an area of deficit for us at Freetown Elementary School. So we understand children are just having difficulty getting, decoding words, and then obviously, if we can't decode them, we can't lift the words off the page and understand that and bring it into context. So we've been getting this PD on phonics, phonemic awareness. Our assessments are lined up. This is called a Chorus Phonics Assessment that each teacher gives. We put the children within a certain intervention group, and then we progress monitor their skills. So small group comes, there are different strategies that they have to implement each day, every other day when they meet with those groups. And this is the work that we've been doing, as you've heard. We've got a main team with the DESI group, which meets with Lori Moffo, and then we also have an after-school team, which is more, more teachers are involved with that, and Lori meets with us in person. Here's the work that we're doing. Here's what it should look like in a classroom. She models with them. She goes in, she's at common planning, she's at data meetings. So this work is constantly getting monitored and spoken about with the teachers. So through that work, it is our hope we can report out by the end of this year or next year when we come back together again, that our students will hopefully be at grade level or they have reached their stretch growth in that sense. Let's move to the last one.
And then our last goal for goal number three, again, is fostering and promoting those building of relationships. So we'll foster and promote the building of relationship among Assawamse Elementary School and Freetown, the Lakeville Community, and the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District to continue to share our educational mission, vision, and goals, and promote the importance of community partnerships. So again, you know, due to COVID, just like Dr. Sullivan and everyone, I think, prior to us said, it's been really hard to form those relationships and work with families. Even the Highlander Design Team, it's great. I have two parents on there, but for them to just say it's nice to know what's going on in the schools, it's nice to know what's happening in terms of curriculum and initiatives. So that's been really nice. I just kind of bulleted a bunch of things that we were able to do this year that we weren't able to do. Open house, kindergarten welcome, kindergarten orientation, popsicles on the playground, trunk-or-treat event, PTO meetings. We have in-person and virtual. The firefighters came this year to do their safety visits, PBIS assemblies with the whole collective school each month. Friday AES update, school council, parent participation again on the Highlander Design Team and on my school council, and then just strategies that are ongoing. Again, every Friday, we send out an AES update in addition to Mr. Mederos's superintendent corner, school council, chorus concerts. We will have our first holiday concert next week, so we're kind of excited about that. Curriculum nights, PTO events, and continuing our partnerships with fire, police, and senior center. They're actually very involved at Assawamse, so that's really great. And then just some measures of progress is that by January and June, we will have held some sort of a curriculum event, whether it's virtual or in-person, and my curriculum leaders and I are planning those as we speak. I don't know if you have anything to add.
No, I was just going to add, I think the young lady who spoke earlier, Katie was just, is making me smile because she was saying that she having fun nights at the high school, and we had a, and she said something about gingerbread. Last Friday, we had a kindergarten gingerbread night, well-attended by many people. So high school gingerbread night, kindergarten gingerbread night. Couple of Mondays from now, we have a grade-one storybook night, and I know Mrs. Barron, you have joined us before for that, so we're getting those up. And I should also say, we have a grade-three holiday chorus concert one week from tonight that's taking place. So we've got these events back open, our doors are open again, inviting families back into our building to sort of get that partnership up again, to just add to that conversation.
Thank you, Mike. This is Fox. So this was, you can imagine the challenge, right? How to incorporate five presentations into 30 minutes, try to keep it condensed short. It's tough to hear it all, but there's so much there. Understand, one thing that I wish my school board could see and even the community could see, the weekly newsletters. I'm not talking about the newsletters these principals share and the communication they share with the parents and the families, because they do that, but the motivational and the conversations they're having with staff relative to learning on a weekly basis and emails that I'm privy to just really, would really just totally support what they're sharing with you tonight. I'll open it up for questions. I know they jumped around a little bit because the, we'll be a little bit more concise with one slide for each MCAS too and speak a little bit to the data. I know the board on occasion has asked us to come back, and we are prepared to do some sort of progress reporting back on this plan, whether it be in March or April, May, or whatever makes the most sense, but we'll make sure it fits in, and so they can, they can give you an update there too. But I'll, Mrs. Fox, I'll turn it to the board. Like I said, I know it's a little challenging kind of take it all in at one point, but I certainly thought it was important that they come before you.
It is a great deal of information, and thank you all for trying to consolidate it as much as possible so that, you know, we all could take in as much as possible also. I'll entertain any questions from the board on these school improvement plans as presented. See, they're in awe. They're in total awe.
Yeah, no, I mean, the only comment is they look great. Thank you so much for the hard work that undoubtedly went into this. And Mr. Mederos took the wind out of my sails. He's, he knew what I was going to say before I could say it, is that I do look forward to having you guys come back and just see where we're at with all of this, because I do know everything that you put down on this paper is going to drive our students forward. So I do appreciate that. So just thank you.
Mr. Sankwitz is correct. I was trying to not be reactive because he was going to make that statement. I said, you know, I'll jump ahead and say that because he's typically said that, representing all the board, obviously, really, really. But it's exciting times. I mean, what you heard is the norm coming back. I hope you really sensed the enthusiasm of my administrators and Katie and the kids. So many activities. A lot of districts have not taken and jumped into the deep end yet, right, to the pool in relation to activities, field trips, assemblies. We are all in here, at Freetown-Lakeville, safely, and we're doing it. And we're going to continue to bring families in the community, and we've been successful. And I think it's a tribute to a collective group, and you see those plans. We'll get these plans up on the website for families that are watching tonight, want to see a little bit more detail, although I know they are shared by the principals with their stakeholders. So thanks for listening in today.
I too knew that Mr. Sankwitz was going to ask the same question, but it's not an unreasonable one, and it's certainly one he's voiced before. The update is really important to all of us on the committee. So yeah, I don't care if it's March, whenever, we'll look forward to that. That's it? No further questions? So let's go ahead and do the item six. Yeah, the FY '22 budget.
Good evening. For the FY '22 year-to-date budget report versus actual results, they are presented in your packets as well as the assessment sheet. The district's year-to-date expenditures of $13 million and budgetary balances year-to-date compared to the prior years nicely, which is excellent news considering that we are looking at possible exposure to price increases that we have all been facing. The message that we've shared with our district's leadership team is to remain spending conservatively and to carefully weigh out purchasing decisions as a result of any future exposures to inflation. I do think we are in excellent shape, but we are just keeping our eyes on this. As far as the assessment sheet, there are no updates since the last school committee meeting. As it relates to COVID CARES funding, we have a new source of support from the town of Freetown for approximately $25,000 worth of PPE from their remaining CARES funds. As a response to that, the town of Lakeville is now providing support for us to submit a reimbursement request for an additional $30,000, which we will use to a PPE that we have previously purchased. And for future PPE requests, we plan on requesting funding from FEMA as they will consider a 100% reimbursement until April 1st, 2022. And that concludes my FY '22 update.
I will tell you, somebody asked me, how can a school possibly need more PPE for everything we did? But it never ends. So that was good news. Questions? FY '22? Thank you.
Please, we'll have some updates on '23 and progress in the report a little bit later on.
Good. DESI guidelines, staffing, transportation, that's my unit two years.
So as far as DESI in general, we received no additional guidelines or mandates. We still have the January 5th timeline as it relates to the commissioner. Typically, we'll report out, I think, the committee at that point, probably in that, even that first meeting in January, when we meet, we'll have some typical recommendations or suggestion where the commissioner's heading in relation to the mask mandate, and I'll have an update, I think, at that January 4th session, and then we can take appropriate action if we get to the point where the district can make some local decision in relation to that. I provided you some staffing updates. Obviously, the superintendent's position is currently posted with my retirement in June, in addition to some other postings that exist that relate to some grant monies that are available. I've provided you the class size numbers and updates. Typically, you don't see a lot of significant changes, and I think that's reflective there between October and December. With one student difference there, you'll see a grade here or there, but not much change there. And then lastly, I provided you, was something I was hoping to not have to do in length, but give you certainly the COVID update numbers. I've actually provided you today's number, counting tomorrow, which is day 60, the number of positive student cases that we've had, 177, 14 staff cases, and 191 total. Give you some of the fact that we've administered 1,526 tests to make, to keep students in school as part of the test-and-stay schedule. I've given you the updated vaccination numbers. We've had positive cases of 43, number 43 last week, and we're currently at 28. Having said that, I don't want to mislead anybody here to say we don't have a safe environment. In fact, we don't see, Sherry Barron was part of the Wellness Council, and with all of our nurses and the Board of Health represented and spoke, and they spoke specifically to the fact that we're not seeing transmission within the schools, right? We're certainly, the cases are rising in both towns as they are in the Commonwealth and throughout, but it does not appear to be disruptive. I'll give one anecdotal, and then I'll open it up if there are any questions before we bounce into MCAS. I went to Freetown Elementary School this morning as part of my return to getting my act out to the schools, as I tried to at least get to the schools once or twice a week. And as I walked through, it was very early this morning, it was before buses. Students were coming in for the breakfast program, for the before-after care program, parents were there, and kids. So for those folks that are really dismayed by this whole test-and-stay and just the overwhelming task and how upset and concerned our kids were, a couple of kids, as I'm walking in the door, going, hey, good morning, Mr. Mederos, how you doing? And, and parents are there. I said, hey, what are you here for? I'm here for breakfast, and I'm here, and one's got Legos. And, hey, I'm getting COVID tested this morning. I mean, like, with the mask on, smile, yeah, I'm ready, I'm going. I said, where are you heading? I'm going to the auditorium. So, so, I don't mean to, this is not said to be sarcastic or humorous, we are seeing our students, so as part of the process, which seems like we're isolating these students and making them, and have them, these are kids who know me, right? Know our administrators and leaders, and there's school personnel out there, by the way, who are saying, nope, part of the process is that. Listen, if this is the alternative, or a year ago, we're being sent home, we're, we're right on board. And so, every school has kind of that system. Elementary school students had some parents, I engaged in some conversations with them. Couple of the parents were waiting for those test results. Now, imagine a younger child, if you're gonna go to work, so they want to be sure that, in fact, the kid safely is in school, can remain in school. Keep in mind, these kids can take the bus to school. Keep in mind that they are involved in all school activities, so if you're a close kid, identifies as close contact, the whole point of this is to try to keep our schools as safe as possible and allow our kids. So, any, I will dismiss right now any rumors, and I've said this to my leadership team, and certainly to the board, and to both towns, any idea that we're backing off of activities between now and the holiday, it's simply not true, right? We are continuing all our activities, we're doing it safely, we're doing it all level safely, and we feel good about the current plan, and when the state allows us some flexibility, which I think will be happening in the near future, we'll make some adjustments, and I'll be coming to this board with my recommendations. I have said to parents who want to hear it, when we are given that discretion, we will, I will recommend that discretion, and I think the board will support that. So, I think it is, we are making progress, we're seeing a lot of significant gains. I'll be happy to answer any specific questions in some of the numbers I provide you. I give you those numbers because I want to be as transparent. Those dashboards are updated, not to mislead or scare people about the concerns they should have in schools, but to know that we're reporting everything out as they're being presented.
Question? Yes?
Yeah, through the chair, I just, I would hope at our next January meeting that we just have an agenda item where we do have a space to talk about whatever the commissioner does come out with.
Yeah.
So, just try to get that on the agenda moving forward.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then I think we're jumping into M C A S.
We are back. So, the principals are back up, and I know we have an assistant principal here, Mr. Davey as well, with support. So, we do have slides that I think for those folks that are here, they're a little bit easier to see. We recognize the school improvement plans are a little challenging, so we just have the title up there while the principal's presenting. I think these slides are our attempt to be as concise and direct, and really, we're led by the principals. And so, we are starting again at the secondary level. You'll see some similarity between the high school and middle school format, for obvious reasons, and the complexity of the testing, and then you'll see a little different format for the intermediate school, Asswamsit, and Freetown Elementary School. So, without further ado, I know it was kind of disjointed and broken up, but we felt it would really have related that first presentation. Let's focus on some data here as it relates to, if you recall, from the November session, Dr. Kiblinsky kind of gave the overview, and I said, stay tuned, we're gonna have some principals up here, speaking specifically about the data within their schools and levels. So, without further ado, if I may, Mrs. Fox, I'm gonna introduce Principal Desert from the high school.
Thank you very much. We are very proud of our students and our teachers, and it's a credit to all schools, the kind of scores that we have on our M C A S. So, it was, this was very new to me. Everything's new to me, but this was very new to me, and thank you, Mr. Davey, again, for being the man who didn't necessar, wasn't necessarily all that well-versed in M C A S either when he started, but now, after two years, he's, he's the right-hand man. So, we pulled up the data, and the data's a little bit different than what we normally work with. So, when I, I have to pause for a moment before looking at the numbers that I put in there, because our pass rates for E L A are 95%, math is 94%, bio is 96%. It's a little bit different how it's reported by the state, and I had to get kind of used to that. Another thing about it, too, is that bio is not listed most of the time, or reported as exceeding, meeting partially, or not meeting expectations. They're still using the advanced proficient needs improvement. So, we're using this data that's still kind of apples and oranges. So, you'll see on this that, you know, we have 19% of our students in E L A, for example, exceeding expectations, 45% meeting. In every case, we are ahead of the state numbers, so we're beating those state numbers, except for 2% on the exceeding expectations in biology, which of course, we will work on. But I needed to take some time to really dive into the not meeting expectations, to look at where those nine students came, those 12 students, and I thank Mr. Higgins for continuing to take my calls, even though there's a caller ID, and he could just ignore it. Sometimes he doesn't answer, and I'm sure he's there. But those numbers don't quite match exactly right. So, in that dive that I did with him, with Mr. Davey, with the curriculum leaders, the nine students, for instance, represent a bit more. They represent the students who are taking the M C A S alt, you know, so they're not taking that regular M C A S, they're taking a portfolio exam. And it also represents students who both passed and did not pass. So, my understanding from my curriculum leaders is that we moved from the legacy test to the next-gen test, and they're still doing some scaling on that. So, some students who didn't meet expectations, when they compared it to the state, actually pushed them up to passing. So, we have about three students in that way. So, there's some scaling involved in here, which will not happen next year. So, that's why they're concerned about what will happen to, not what will happen to scores, but know that we may take a hit on some of those percentages, and won't have the highest, high numbers that, that we normally expect. Some of the concerns that they have is, you know, we can see in the E L A, is that the score adjustments from the state will occur next year. We have moved from that legacy paper test in English, which was three days long, with a whole, one full day, just on the long comp, doing a, spending all that time making a rough draft, having a snack, and then writing the entire rest of that essay. They don't do that part anymore, but what they do, it's down to two days, but now it's three essays. So, they have more essays with two to three texts that they have to bring in. So, that's a higher level of performance. So, they know that this test is a bit more challenging, and they're working on that, and we'll be talking with, we'll be talking with Mr. Kiblinsky as well about ways that we can address that through P D. Our concerns in math are that we had a higher number of students who failed Algebra I last year than, than previous years, and we're trying to address gaps in that and modify curriculum, because last year, more of the application problems were, they did not get to those, and it was more skill-driven, you know, with the hybrid kind of learning. So, those are the students who will be taking it next year, so we know that we might take a little bit of a hit on that. In the biology, the curriculum leader and her biology teachers share that one of the difficulties with the scoring there is resilience, that students can do fairly well on the multiplication part with the content, but they need to try, try on the open response. That with three long open response, they found that some students were, you know, doing one and then barely touching the other and skipping another, and that would negatively affect scores. So, they're working on open response, open responses with the students and being more resilient around that. So, it's been a bit of a change in the scale, but I would say that the grade, that the percentages overall are, you know, are very successful, and again, that's a tribute to all of the support and all of the grades to these students.
Thank you, Kaylin. I often reference, it's not, it was ahead in the first quarter. We liked that final score piece, and certainly, our students, in spite of the gaps and all the issues that we've had to face, are, are still knocking out of the park and are very successful. And Kaylin's absolutely correct, it's the foundation working on right up to the high school. Next, we have the middle school. Mr. Higgins?
Thank you again. I'm gonna make a suggestion here, off-topic, to the school committee, if you're looking for ways to increase turnout, it sounds to me like gingerbread nights are the way to go. Not M C A S nights, no, that would be, yes. Maybe you do a combination gingerbread and M C A S. So, I want to start by identifying that it is difficult to, to compare the 2019 results to the 2021 results. Obviously, the structure of the test was significantly different. The most recent test was a single day for each, for E L A, for science, and for math. And then, of course, we had remote participation as well. I think we had it K through eight, or the M C A S testing K through eight. So, the numbers, we, when we looked at those, we do, in fact, internally, look at them just to get a sense of where we are, but ultimately, it is, as Mrs. Desert mentioned, it is comparing apples to oranges. I would like to start and identify that compared to the state, we are either on, very close to, or above the state in, in all of the important elements, in meeting or exceeding expectations. Certainly, a combination of meeting and exceeding were above the state. And I would like to focus on the science to begin with, because I think it's probably our best success story, and I think that goes from the kindergarten all the way through to eighth grade. We have seen increases in our science scores each year, even in the most recent numbers in 21, and the results, this is really a testament, obviously, to the teacher's instruction. I never want to put that to the side. That is a big part of it. But in, in addition to that, as a district, we made an investment in STEM scopes several years ago. We rolled it out, grade by grade, and last year's eighth-grade group was the first group that had been using STEM scopes all the way through, and it really does make a big difference. So, I want to thank you all for supporting that decision, and I also want to thank all the teachers who put that together, the task force, and made the decision to join, or to bring STEM scopes in, because it certainly has been quite successful. With regard to how the approach, well, I would say, let me add to it, now that we have our math textbook resource, our hope is to have similar results in math in our middle school, providing now, teachers, we have a standard curriculum that we use, but now we have common resources that all the teachers can have access to, and it's more easily accessible for our students, much in the same way STEM scopes is. So, I apologize, I was gonna jump over that, but I want to point that out. So, when we got our data results from 21, we wanted to primarily focus on what can this do to help us help our students? And you can see the areas of concern. The teachers identified in E L A analyzing two or more texts and expressing the analysis in written form, analysis of character actions or decisions in a passage. In the case of math, applications of properties to define expression equivalence, that is quite a sentence. Applying mathematical concepts in real-world, in real-world contexts, which, by the way, to you and me, that's word problems. But students struggle working through word problems, identifying, taking the skill, and applying it to what would be considered a real-world context. And in the areas of science, plate tectonics and atomic and molecular density models. These were the areas of concern, but I think it's more important to identify how we found these areas of concern. So, we did it in two steps. The first is, we took the standards analysis that we received from the state, and we looked at it from two perspectives. One, they give us the, they identify for us what percent our students got. How many of our students got that answer, or that standard correct, correctly, or the questions related to that answer, that standard correct? And then also, how do our responses, how do our performance, how does that compare to the state overall? What we wanted to do was look for, where were those, those critical pain points where not only were we scoring low, but we were also scoring poorly compared to the state? And these were where we identified the areas of concern. Now, there's also two elements of that, because we have teachers looking at their own instruction, and so, they're, they're looking at the standards relative to the students that they just taught. So, if I'm a seventh-grade math teacher, I'm obviously gonna look at the data to identify where in my instruction I can improve, given the student's performance on the most recent test, but I also need to be looking at the sixth grade, because I'm going to be getting those, those students coming to me this year. So, I need not only adjust my instruction for what maybe shortcomings that I have to, to work on as in my instruction, but also, what are those shortcomings that are coming to me from the students? So, the two-pronged approach, I think, is gonna be quite helpful for us. What has supported that is the iReady results that we've, we've been working with, with the benchmark, and then the follow-up information we've gotten from the student's performance on their iReady. We use iReady, not probably at the same level that it's used in the elementaries, but again, we've just started this year. I want to also share with you that the success we've had with the Academic Resource Center, I stood before you last year and presented to you the, my staffing plan, or our staffing plan at the middle school, one of which, one part of which was to adjust from our math skills teacher, to adjust that, to make it an academic resource teacher, to be able to provide that level of support to students who are general ed students, who have struggled historically. These, we identified those students at the beginning of this year, coming to us from the spring, the data that we had from their, their grades in the spring. We're talking about a group of students who, particularly last year, but going back historically, they have struggled academically. They have passed few classes, and therefore, they are feeling, in fact, quite negatively about school and about their performance. So, I want to share with you the success of this, because it was your support that allowed us to do it this year, and I want to thank you. We have 41 students currently enrolled in the program. We have five sections of it. We keep the sections relatively small in order to provide the service that we, we can, the services that will help them. That means out of that 41, there are 205 academic classes, not relate, not including Unified Arts. So, they have five academic classes in the period, math, E L A, science, social studies, and then we have a fifth class, whether that be STEM, or whether that be in E L A two and sixth grade. Out of the 205, this group of students, as I said, who have historically had struggled to pass classes and struggled academically, they have passed, they passed in the first term, first quarter, 178 of the 205, with a 87% pass rate. In addition to that, in the four primary core academics, math, E L A, science, and social studies, in math, their average in first term, this, these 41 students was a 70%, in E L A, it was an 81%, in science, it was an 80%, in social studies, it was a 70%. So, this is testament to the work that's being done, and that, in fact, we can make quite a significant improvement for these students who have struggled, not just as a result of COVID, but these are students who've struggled historically even prior to. And then, lastly, if you'll see on the slide when we talk about the plan, it says, test promotion with families. We struggle in the middle school level with students not quite taking the test as seriously as their younger colleagues, their younger peers, and their older peers. The high school students identify that they need to pass to graduate, and the younger students, well, they love to show that they, just how smart they are. But in middle school, as we, we work on, is that there's, there's a little bit of cynicism that arrives in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And so, we're partnering with the families, reaching out to identify the importance of this test, so that we know we can do the best for their students. We can gather the data, and so, making those inroads and promoting the test to those families, our hope is to, to see an improvement as a result. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Higgins? Dr. Sullivan, intermediate school, fourth and fifth grade. I think we have a fourth up first, Liz, do you want to do, which, which grade?
Fourth.
I think fourth's up there. Do you want me to move it?
Yeah, let's do fourth. So, one of the things that Jack mentioned that I, that I wanted to mention, so of course, he's looking, when he looks at his sixth-grade data, he, he wants to look, you know, look at, he's looking at the sixth grade, you know, you have to look at the grade ahead, is what I'm saying. So, we, when we do our data team meetings, we look at the third-grade data, because those are my actual fourth graders now. Right now, these scores are my fifth graders. When we look at our fifth graders, those are Jack's. So, just so you know, when we're doing our data team meetings, I have access to the iReady and the M C A S scores from both Michael and Bethany's school. So, when we look at them, we look at our current fourth grade. So, as we're planning improvements for our fourth grade, it's our current fourth grade, we're looking at their third grade. So, it's kind of tricky, but just so that you know, we are addressing the apples, not just the oranges. So, when you look at the fourth grade, we, you know, are the scores where we, where we would love them to be? Absolutely not. My, the fourth grade is another thing that we have to consider, is the first grade, first time that these youngsters have ever taken it, after a half, you know, after an abbreviated third-grade year, and then the hybrid year. So, you know, did we expect that we were going to hit it out of the park? I certainly did not, but when you look at this, in each category, E L A in, in fourth grade, as far, if you put meeting and exceeding together, we did better than the state. If you look at math, meeting and exceeding, you put them together, we did better than the state. One of the other things to consider, in addition to the fourth grade, is with it being their first time, I had, I had a big number of TECA students. We had very high participation of our TECA students taking the test at home. It was, it was as smooth as could be, there was a lot that went, went into it to plan it out, but we had, I believe it was about 23 students, so those have to be, those numbers have to be factored, and that weren't receiving the same instruction that we had. I mean, I haven't pared it down to see who, maybe they brought us up, but I, but I don't know, but just to factor in that they were not getting the day-to-day instruction that we had. We were, were able to look at the, when you, I don't know how many people are familiar with it, but Jack alluded to it when he said, you look, it, it leads you right to the standards that show you where you have your strengths and your weaknesses, it can go right down to the items. So, we looked at those things. We were able to see an E L A vocabulary acquisition uses, usage is really, really a weakness. It's very much something that we need to focus on, and we are. Some of the, one of the really great points is some of the really engaging, I hesitate to say fun, but they are fun, programs that we had out of necessity last year, from being hybrid and relying on the hybrid and relying on the computer so much, like I Know It, Vocabulary, Storyworks. Those programs are all standards-based. They have, they are very, very engaging. Lots of classes, if you walk around in the morning, I'm sure Mr. Maderas, when you go around, you've seen, you know, they're up on the screen. Sometimes they're just a transition thing, sometime they're a warm-up activity, but they are all embedded in the standards. So it's wonderful that we have those things. And those have been used very much for the, one particular issue with vocabulary acquisition, which shows up both in fourth and fifth grade. In fourth grade, one of the other areas was narrative writing and key ideas and details. That's been pretty much a standard for a while, that we've struggled with that. Math, equivalent fractions, decimals, and symmetry were three of the big ones that came out as things that we need to address. We'll use our common planning, where we have iReady in place. Many of the things that I talked about in the school improvement plan are, our interventionist have all of this data. The reading specialist pours through the ELA data when she's making her rosters. We're conferencing with the students, you know, as many steps as we can take to try and improve upon these. Again, if you can flip to the fifth grade for me, Renee. Again, if you look at meeting and exceeding, we did better than the state in ELA and math. Does that mean that they were great scores? It doesn't. Can we improve in a big way? Absolutely. ELA, as I said, vocabulary acquisition is a big area of concern. We're doing lots and lots with vocabulary. The fifth grade ELA team is doing a collective student learning goal around vocabulary for their, for their own student learning goal as their, in their evaluation piece. And that's been successful. They'll be evaluating that again in the winter to see where they are at this point. Evaluating expressions with parentheses, converting measurements, volume. I did not put my science ones on the slide, but I have them, grade five science. Again, we were, as far as exceeding, we were equal with the state. As far as meeting, we did better than the state. Partially meeting, better than the state, and not meeting, better than the state. We had 52% that were meeting or better. I also attribute it to STEM scope. It's a wonderful, wonderful program, incredibly engaging. A few years ago, we were lucky enough, when Craig McAmuck came over to this building, we freed up the space that he was in, which was sort of a defunct, I believe it was a computer lab, Bethany, where I, was it a computer lab back where Alyssa's room? I have it as a science lab now, before Craig moved into it. I think it was a computer lab, but it was, it has these round tables that have sections to it that ended up, two children can fit there beautifully and do a science experiment. It almost looks like it was built for it. So they have a science lab, and they're able to go out and do that and have all the items they need for the experiments. The teachers are usually really enthusiastic about those. Those are calls that I get that say, you got to come down here and see this because the children are very, very excited. So I do attribute the successes we have in science to the STEM scope.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Mr. Ward, are you, Freetown Elementary School?
All right. So in regards to Freetown Elementary School, immediately you can see up there when we look at the ELA, you put the meeting, exceeding together. We outscored the state historically. If you take a look at that, that number is pretty consistent, what took place in 2019, which was at 56%. Now, math, to the right. I will start with the positive by stating, yes, we're at 42% outscored the state. Now, immediately when I got the scores, Mr. Maderas can tell you, I had a conversation with him, and I think I've said it to him a couple of times, that although we did outperform the state, 42%, we're not accustomed to that score at Freetown Elementary School. I'm just stating that out loud. Historically, in my time there, we've been 82, 64, 61. So 42% although outperformed the state, we're not accustomed to that. So proud of the work we had, or we did, and the scores we got, but it is not where we'd like to be. Let me just state that right away.
I don't think there's one opportunity that Mr. Ward doesn't share that with you when I come to visit.
That is the truth. I think that's what I say all the time when I see.
And I see Mrs. Forni, you're shaking your head, probably in agreement with that.
Yeah, so I do. I talk about it often in the staff, I mean, feel the same way. So again, happy outperform the state, not where we'd like to be. So let's go to ELA, areas of concern. And as I was looking at Dr. Sullivan, she said she's got access to the third grade. Main idea and details, just to be a little bit more specific, so the folks at home and the board, and I know you're aware of this, analyze how and why individual events or ideas and develop and interact throughout the text. So we're trying to hone in on the type of question that we're asking students within the classroom. When you look at grammar, punctuation, and conventions, right? Just having, demonstrating command of the English language with punctuation, capitalization, and as we've shared with our DESI grant, vocabulary acquisition and understanding. So those were the areas of high struggle for us, right? Math, you see multi-step problems, bare numbers. When you look at those problems, we're more successful. However, as you can imagine, with students multi-step, they get through the first step, they forget the next step, or if it takes one miscalculation in this step, we know what that leads to the next step, right? So next piece, geometry, fraction as well, and I'll talk about the plan, but more specifically to geometry, where it falls in our scope and sequence is actually at the end of the school year. And when MCAS comes, it's May, right? So we are just about starting the geometry unit of study at that point. So we, teachers are well aware of this, so they have to be innovative and just unique in how they sprinkle geometry, whether they have station rotations and they name them various quarter laterals and whatnot, so they start to see those different type of pieces. So we're getting, you know, unique in the work that we're doing with geometry, but it just happens that it plays out in the scope and sequence in which it does fractions as a work with it. So plan, spiraling content, example I just gave you, geometry. As I shared earlier with our school improvement plan, you hear about tier one, tier one, tier two instruction. Obviously, we do the whole group, and then we get into small group, and we sort of are going to repeat that work. We realize where students aren't getting it, whether it's on a formal assessment, informal assessment. We're working towards that piece when it comes to our high needs. So you talk about a special education student sometimes. What happens that they're getting the services from their teacher, classroom teacher, but the sped, special education teacher. For example, they could be in foundations like Unit Four, Week Two, the classroom teacher. The special education teacher's in Unit Four, Week One, so they hear that same work one week later. So it's that same type of, depending on their disability, they can hear the work again, right, from the special education teacher. So being very strategic in that work. Information center session for families, coming either January or February. I will put one on for, as you can imagine, third grade. It's their first time exposure to MCAS. So let's make it informational night. Let it be engaging, let families see what it looks and sounds like, what a problem looks like. I can show them what the new, next generation MCAS looks like, how they got to interact with it, how they got to move technology-wise. And sometimes a question is not just a click and answer, ABC, you got a click and drag an area and whatnot. So again, I shared this with the purpose of, remember, they're eight and nine years old when they take this exam, right? And that's, I'm not making soup, it's across the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and trying to build their stamina. I heard Principal Desert just say about just sort of their resilience in trying to build that. We're trying to build that with eight and nine-year-olds and making sure they get three passages and they've got three different essays that they've got to write, or short response, long response, however it is, and make them work through that and persevere through that type of work. Timely open response items. As you see math in ELA, racing, by the way, does not mean they're racing to get it done. Race means that they're reanswering, they're restating, they're answering the sighting, and they're explaining their answer. That's what, we've been doing that from K through three. So by the time Mrs. Forni was here, can tell you, she gets them in second grade at this, and she builds on that. So when they get to third grade, they're ready to race again, and they have this format, and they're equipped with the tools to answer the question. Cubing means that they're going to circle, underline box, explain, support, those type of, when it comes to a math problem, okay? So that way they can understand what is the problem asking with that piece. Professional development, I've already talked about the DESI consultant, about phonics in the past. It's been about writing. We're continuing with that work. iReady, as you know, we've had this for quite some time with the iReady Reading, excuse me, Ready Math. So iReady's been here for math reading. The iReady reading has come up, and again, this builds their stamina on the computer. They have certain minutes that they, we ask them to get done. I just got a report from Dr. G today, or yes, today, Dr. G, yes, about the time at Freetown, and the children, if they're meeting a certain amount of time, which is 40 to 45 minutes, we're hoping to, we're seeing greater gains, and we're seeing a large percentage of the students at Freetown Elementary Staff, obviously, giving the students the time to do that in the classroom, and they're using it, and it's showing some positive gains. So again, that helps in the sense of, as we always want to be sensitive to time on a computer, right? In that piece, we don't want to have too much of that. But nevertheless, those things do help when the MCAS day comes, and they have to sit in front of a computer for a couple of hours or an hour to get it complete. And then obviously, you've heard this across the board tonight, just common planning time utilized in the correct way when it's just about looking at student work. It's about students. It's not about, I had an issue with this. It's coming up with a plan for our students. So this is the work that has been ongoing for quite some time at Freetown Elementary School. And again, I'm going to say it one more time, as Mr. Maderas just said, that I do this often, is that 42%, we've got to improve that. And we're acknowledging that straight out. I did it immediately when I saw it, and the staff know, we're working towards it with that. So thank you, everyone.
Ms. Penal, Assamwamsa?
Okay. So for Assamwamsa Elementary School, for ELA, you can see the number of meeting and exceeding expectations is 60%, again, above the state, and that's also consistent with where we usually are as well. Math, 45 and 9, 54%, again, above the state percentage. Again, we would like to see that a little bit higher. Usually, again, up more, the 60% meeting and exceeding expectations. Not meeting expectations, 8%, you know, a lot lower than the state of 26. So obviously, we were really happy with that result as well. My initiatives and plan pretty much mirrors Mr. Ward. We do work really closely and again, have a lot of the same initiatives. But for ELA, for us, it was multiple meaning words, conventions, and sequencing events. And again, the unique thing about our third graders is that they are now up at the intermediate school, so sometimes looking at that particular data, you know, is a little bit difficult. We do get individual teacher data that we also do look at so we can see if there, you know, are any patterns or anything that teachers specifically need to work on, and I wish I could say there were, but it does tend to be different each year. So we are fortunate to have the iReady and everything else that we have in terms of data and being able to pinpoint deficits and provide interventions for kids. And then for math, it was fractions and two-step problems. As Mr. Ward said, geometry actually is one of our patterns, but it wasn't one of our weaknesses this past year. And again, as Mr. Ward had said, spiraling content to ensure coverage. So geometry is a unit that we teach at the end of the year. Geometry is also very vocabulary-based, so it is something that we are now spiraling throughout the year. You know, a student might be asked what attributes or vertices, and if they don't remember vertices, there's no way they're going to get the question right, but they might clearly know how many corners or... So again, very vocabulary-based. So those are kind of some of the things we looked at, too, in terms of looking at our curriculum for the year and making sure that we cover those things with students. Again, an information session for families. Mr. Ward and I have talked about putting that together for our third-grade families this year, either in January or February, and really just letting parents know what the expectations are. So that's something that we'll be working closely with to provide that for our third graders. Weekly open response items, math and ELA. Again, we use the same strategy of race and cubes that Mr. Ward just defined, so it's nice that we use those at the two elementary schools so all of those kids are familiar with those strategies. And then engaging and looking at student work, recording data and areas of need so that we can continue working on that. Again, we've already talked about the DESI consultant. She did actually work on some writing and open response with us where we did create all-new rubrics last year. And again, Mr. Ward and I share those, so those are something we can use with teachers. It's not a surprise that narrative writing is a weakness in grade four, although it continually is with really being on the computer. In the hybrid model, it was really hard to conference with kids around their individual writing pieces. So it's not a surprise that there would be a deficit in that area. So that's another area also that we've talked about in terms of putting a plan and intervention in place that we'll be working with the DESI consultant on. Weekly MCAS practice, this is something actually we don't do too much of, but we're actually going to be sending it home. We composed a letter in grade three, even if it's just for some repeated exposure, open response items, and weekly practice that students will have a two-week period to work on and then bring back to class so we can kind of look at that work. I know it is at home, so it's kind of hard. You're not going to be able to see if it was fully them doing it on their own. But even working with parents, we just think that repeated exposure and for parents to get more exposure in terms of what their expectations are, we thought would be a good thing to do this year. And then iReady and Bass, again, we've kind of obviously already talked about this, but using that again for intervention and to progress monitor, especially those high-needs kids that will get the double dose and will be able to work with. And then continuously using common planning time to analyze growth and the progress of our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fox, I mean, I knew their board asked questions. I hope the common theme that you saw come across is complacency certainly is not what this leadership team feels. I mean, we are, they've heard, at least they'll hear for seven more months, raise the bar. And I think you see it evident there that we're not accepting the fact that we're above the state number, and anything that we're doing, it's really done for comparison as it relates to the Commonwealth or that, you know, that cadre of students within a grade level or school. I often say this, a nauseam, to these folks that in my organization, I'm not looking for problem identifiers. I have plenty of folks that do that. I'm looking for problem solvers. I think you heard and saw, witnessed to, a bunch of problem solvers here leading their schools to make sure that we address the concerns of our kids moving forward. But I'll open up their specific questions.
Yeah, thank you. I do, we've had a rough couple of years, and, you know, the scores don't reflect everything that has transpired at any level. This is a microcosm, almost. But it did identify for all of you specific areas that needed attention, and I think we all appreciate the fact that you have done this, really drilling down to figure out how we're going to continue to make sure that score isn't what it is next time. My personal concern, and it's always been a concern with me, I always get nervous when I see, you know, vocabulary as a problem in third grade, and it's transforming itself and becoming a problem even for the fourth and fifth, and then it continues on. So that open-ended responses in biology are a challenge. And I remember, Shelley, I remember the story maps we used to do back in the day. I don't know what we do to improve that. I know when you have the hybrid and everything else, it maybe wasn't as much reading. Vocabulary is best built by reading and working and writing and things like that. I don't know how we fix that, but we have to fix it in the earliest grades because it's going to, it's going to be ubiquitous. You have to do, in bio, open-ended responses, you have to do college applications. I mean, you know, all of this stuff requires a strong vocabulary, strong writing foundation. And, you know, I get yelled at because I'm kind of the grammar queen over here, but I really firmly believe that some of the things you identified and pointed out will help us make sure we get there with these kids. Questions from the committee? I know it's been a long night, and this was an awful lot of information and data, but thank you. Thank you all.
So if you don't have it tonight, and I know that certainly just through me, you are the principals, they'd be happy to follow up. We're going to roll this information out, make it available for the community to see as well.
Yes. Mrs. Barron has a question.
For the elementary schools, oh, you are, Mr. Ward, I couldn't find you at first. The interventionists, are they doing both math and reading? I know that Grace, they are, you said, and they were retired teachers and someone else.
Mrs. Barron, at Freetown Elementary School right now, there is a focus based on the need right now that we are in ELA right now. It's not a math, it is just ELA right now.
Okay, thank you.
We're, I'm doing both math and ELA, as Assamwamsa.
You are?
Yes.
And you both have?
We have both an ELA.
Retired folks, too?
I'm sorry?
Retired, they're asking the staff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The staff?
Net role?
Yes, correct, yes.
Yes, yes, Mrs. Barron.
Good, it's working well? It's working well?
Yes. Yes.
Well, you can't understand.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we're fortunate to have those staff returning and helping out each of those buildings.
We certainly are. Thank you very, very much. In the interest of time, I'd like to move the agenda as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and if you don't mind, I'd like to excuse these principals for their next task and thank them for coming out tonight. I know we have a surplus, I can handle that. If you want to stay, Caitlin, you can certainly...
You're welcome to stay for the list.
I'm excited about oscillates, oscilloscope.
As a history teacher, I'm like, if I saw one, I'd want one.
So if we are going right to that next item to follow the chair's lead, I'm in agreement, we are looking at, I am looking for, my recommendation is support the surplus as approved, and so a motion be made.
Okay, I get a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Is there any discussion?
I will just say that I read it very quickly, and I thought we were giving away, we were drawing away stethoscopes, and I thought, hmm.
No, oscilloscopes.
But no. Microscope. It looked like stethoscopes were...
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Where are we?
Here we are.
Oh.
I took the liberty, so we do not have a Director of Curriculum report, you just saw that piece.
Yeah, we're covered.
So Dr. Kavinsky and I had that candid conversation that we will pass.
No, we're covered. Yeah, we'd really like to move through the...
So we have just two brief directors' reports from both of these.
If we could, as quickly as possible. Thank you so much. Good night.
Bye.
Yes, do you?
We just did that.
I'll keep it brief. As it relates to our future MSBA project for Assawamse's windows and doors, our Director of Facilities has begun working on the maintenance plan document that will be required to be submitted by February 25, 2022. So we are moving forward with hitting those goals. And for train, although the district is waiting on its official document, the train project has met substantial completion for our $5.9 million construction project. As train has tied up the majority of their work, they will still be on site with us, with our staff, to make adjustments to the system, to continue monitoring our systems, and to train our staff. They are working on a deficiency list of failed components with estimated costs, and we are planning on covering those deficiencies from our ESER III American Rescue Plan funds. As it relates to our nursing support, the district was recently awarded, I believe, one of the largest grants in nursing to support. It is a two-year competitive grant for a total of $200,000, $100,000 per year. That will help us hire a temporary medical technician or COVID-19 sampler that we could use throughout the district, as well as additional substitute nurses, and also cover more PPE for nurses. As we all know, we are still in challenging times, and we are trying to take advantage of all these one-time opportunities. And for FY '23 budget planning, we are at the very beginning of our budget process. Superintendent Maderas and I have begun scheduling meetings with each of our building principals and directors to start discussing their initial budget requests. This will then assist us in compiling the overall budget request that will be provided to the school committee. And that concludes my update.
Great job on the grant.
Yes.
Competitive grant, sir.
Yeah, we are actively continuing to pursue available funds that are there.
That's fantastic. That's excellent. Any other questions? All right. So we just have a news following in ELA.
Yes. So I have a very brief report this evening. Since we last met, the Office of Student Services participated in a DESI webinar on the upcoming tiered focus monitoring. Pretty much, this incorporates the slide that I included for your use. We are Group A this time, where the primary focus will be student identification, IEP development, programming and support services, and equal opportunity. You'll recall last time, we started, this is the first full six-year cycle of the new tiered focus monitoring. Three years ago, in 1920, Group B, we handled those areas of oversight. So as you can see, it's going to alternate every three years between the Group A and Group B, and we start our self-assessment, well, our self-assessment is due in spring of 2022, and the portal will be open later this month, so we will get a jumpstart on that. In addition to those areas, we're also going to be reporting on federal indicators, indicator 11, 12, and 13. In your packet, you can see the Group A universal standards, and the indicators are noted in red. So we've got eligibility determination, transition services for secondary, and for our pre-K initiation of service at three, and EI transition. And lastly, on that slide, the targeted standards, you can see for your review, both special education and also civil rights. I'm happy to report that Sarah Gates, school psychologist, will be joining us on January 3rd in the role as that third school psychologist, so we're very excited about that, and it is coming in very good time. She will primarily support Grace and Apona Quitt. And lastly, when I wrote this report, Dr. Fornier was slated to come next week. She has been in touch, and that is going to be rescheduled for January, so her schedule needed to change, so we will have her back in January.
So just to, you know, so I know the board's been very active in asking questions about that school psychologist and testing. We were finally able to secure that after a lot of hard work by Alyssa and her department, and that she comes, Gates comes with experience from Dayton Rehoboth as a school psychologist and other school experience, so we do have an experienced person coming in, starting as soon as we could get her on board.
Great. Oh, wow. Thank you. That was quick. I lost my agenda, I got so excited.
She's reading between, reading behind the masks, right? Reading through the mask.
Just everything you need to know is right there.
Well, what about the letter, though?
Oh, that was just for you, so I referenced...
It's so exciting.
It's a grant, additional grant money.
Well, actually, you know, we did hear that we, you know, we were awarded the funds, and that was going to be funding, and then Mr. Maderas and I got sort of a random second congratulatory letter from the governor and lieutenant governor, which I asked Mr. Maderas if they had signed, they typically, you know, sign these, and it was a first.
They both signed it.
Yeah, it was a first.
I...
It was a homelessness and grant fund, about $6,000, right?
Yes, yeah.
A little bit more than that. We just received that literally today.
That's excellent. Did I lose your agenda too?
Subcommittee?
Subcommittee.
Regional finance, TBD.
TBD, okay. Superintendent's evaluation, maybe nothing?
Continued, correct. Wellness met yesterday.
The nice part about being in the wellness committee is that everybody takes all of my information here. We met on December 7th. Kara told you about the grant, it's a multi-year, two-year funding. We have, we talked a lot about consistency with the test and stay negative kids at lunch. All students, all test and stay negative students are now eating lunch in the cafeteria at a separate spot that is within three, is in a three-foot distance of each other because of DES standards, not ours. And we determined that there's no masking going on outdoors for any negative test and stay kids.
Good.
That has been something that the community has been inquiring about. I guess the biggest takeaway for me was one at the very end, when the nurses said that, Joan from Assawamse had said that the nurses are not seeing any school transition, which I think is huge, huge.
Transmission, is that what you said? Okay, sorry.
Transmission, that's right. And if you go on the DESI, the state of Massachusetts website, it pretty much says exactly the same thing. All the transmission is happening for the most part, within the household.
Yeah, yeah.
In the household.
We are one of the subcommittee, we have a VP update from Mr. Stinklet, your attention.
Yes.
Yeah, so last week, I had, I attended the Bristol Plymouth School Committee meeting with a unanimously voted to allow next year an additional 15 students from Freetown on a non-tuition basis, or a non, or a tuition basis. Certainly good news as we work to become members of the district long-term, so all good news there.
And we could actually, that number could move a little, isn't that correct?
Correct. Some flexibility there. We actually have an assembly for our Freetown students.
That's right.
On campus tomorrow. VP is coming in the auditorium to present to all of our Freetown students why like those students have their presentation in relation to Old Colony. So we're right on track, and I'm optimistic that membership might come for Springtown meetings too as well.
Okay, well, this was quite an evening. You have probably data overload.
The principals did an amazing job.
They did an amazing job.
I can cheer before the motion to adjourn, this is the last meeting of the year, technically, January 5th.
Yes, it went right over my head. Yes, you're right.
The calendar year. Other than maybe some executive session issue, I know, but...
Yes, but...
The principals did a phenomenal job.
Yes.
A lot of work went into all of that, a lot of work.
Well, I think I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, good. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.